I'll call this meeting to order. All rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who help us with our vision stands on mission under God and you invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well called and taken. All right. Uh, first thing on the order is recognition of Don Shaw. Um, so Don's been with us for 11 years. And uh, we've laughed together, we've cried together, we pulled our hair out together. So um, you're gonna be sorely missed and I'm really appreciative that you stayed on as Hannah's taken on to help with the transition. Although I think it's even smoother because you've chosen your successor, so to speak. Um, but uh, you've performed a often not seen but vital job for the city, which is the management of our public records, the taking of accurate minutes. And um, and also being the uh, sort of the go-between between the city manager and the, and the city commission as well. And I for one, um, am going to miss you a lot. Um, and uh, but I know you've done a great job of training Hannah as well. Um, so uh, we have this plaque um, that I want to present to you on behalf of the city commission. Appreciation for 11 years of dedicated service to the city of Warrenton. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. And Don has prepared a 15-minute speech. So know how much he likes to speak.
No, I, I do not have a speech prepared. Um, although my husband kept saying I really should have one, but, but I would thank you for the kind words and I will definitely miss you all, everyone at the city here. Um, it has been a pleasure. Yeah, and I, I know Hannah will do a fine job, so.
Thank you. And I, you're not too far away. You're still in Oregon, so you, you're always welcome to swing by the old stomping grounds.
You may see me on Zoom from time to time and yeah, I promise not to be in my pajamas, but.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Well, I will say all my time at the office for being on the commission here, but as a planning commissioner, you were the one I went to and asked questions on. It's really, really more than even people who were uh, running the department sort of taught people what my job was to be. Make sure that I understood where my role was. And you made me a wonderful compliment once and I felt more, more than anybody else that ever gave me sort of endorsed it to move forward just like before. And I thought, I, this is just a good person. I just, if you don't want to crosswalk. Thank you.
I can remember coming down and talking to Don two days before the paperwork or the day the paperwork had to be in for my first commission run. And I was like, Don, you know, what, what's going on here? I kinda asked her a few questions and then, ran home and filled out my paperwork and brought it back and she was appreciative that I was running, so. I, I won't forget that time when we.
Get involved or encourage or recruit, but I can, I can, you know, be, be happy that you do. Yeah.
If it wasn't for Don, I probably wouldn't have. Cause she was right there at the right time and I had some questions and I said, okay, and I grabbed the paperwork and went and filled it out.
Well, the rules just get bigger and bigger every year from the uh, the state secretary of state, so it's nice to have somebody to help you guide through the paperwork.
Memory I won't forget.
Alright, city manager, anything?
Yeah, I mean, I would echo all those sentiments. I've had the privilege of working with Don for a little over three years. And she, she and some of the other staff were the reason I joined this city when I met them and I, I, like you said, good people. You can recognize them and it was, it has been a pleasure to work with Don. Um, her accuracy and the behind-the-scenes glue of holding the city together with that accuracy and preserving our records, making sure they're delivered in a timely manner is crucial. And I really appreciate all the work she does. She has been my, um, listening ear and, and go-between many times and I, I've really appreciated that. So, and she has done a great job of passing on some of her knowledge, a lot of her knowledge onto Hannah, um, and leaving the city in, in good place as she retires. A well, well-earned retirement, so, thanks.
Thank you. Um, and Hannah, if you have anything? I know you don't like speaking, so. I'm sure you've already said your words to that, so I just wanna make sure there was opportunity if you didn't want it, so. Alright, we have the consent calendar before us. Before we do that, we have three additions to the agenda. Uh, business item, item one, which is the appointment to the um, parks, um, marinas and community library board, the um, business organ housing infrastructure grant and the clean water revolving fund loan, uh, request. Those will be items nine F, G, and H respectively. Is there unanimous consent to uh, add this to the agenda? Hearing no objections. So ordered. Alright, uh, before that, we have then, or right after that, we have the consent calendar. So the commission meeting minutes from November 25th and the community center advisory board minutes of October 15th.
Excuse me, mayor, there should be the urban renewal advisory committee bylaws on the consent calendar as well as.
That should be on, shouldn't that be on the urban renewal uh, agency?
Mayor, it is actually on both. The bylaws state it comes back to both for approval.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, it's a very cyclical, cyclical matter because you started this recommendation journey. Uh, but it actually says to come back to both. You see, you'll see it on, request is to put it on both agendas tonight.
Okay, gotcha.
And so requesting for consent calendar for the commission and business item for the urban renewal agency.
Uh, being that you're adding to the consent calendar, do you mind just uh, for the record, uh, stating what the changes are?
Absolutely. So this was brought as a recommendation from the urban renewal agency to the urban renewal advisory board. Um, they discussed the recommendations by the commission, which were to extend the current term limits of the board, um, through the end of this current urban renewal agency. Um, in addition to that, they wanted to make some clerical cleanups. Um, currently, the vice chair was not listed in the um, bylaws and they have a vice chair they appoint. And then also the timing of that appointment, um, in their bylaws, it stated they appoint in June. And they currently do it with everybody else in December. Um, so they wanted to clean up those items and then I think, believe there was a minor change about the secretarial, um, just saying it would be appointed staff member, cause it was not clear in their bylaws whether it was a person on the board or a staff member. So those were the main changes that they requested in addition to your recommendations, but they accepted all of your, the agency's original recommendations as well.
Alright, is there um, uh, is there any objections to adding the urban renewal advisory committee bylaw revisions to the consent calendar? Hearing them, so jet, or so ordered. Um, so that will make a consent counter now A, B. Uh, A is the commission minutes, B is the community center advisory board minutes, and the urban renewal advisory committee by law revisions as C. Is there a motion to approve the consent counter as amended? So moved by Mitchell, second by Moha, um, to approve the consent counter as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next reports and presentations, Commissioner Pope.
Nothing for me tonight.
Uh, I, I, I wanna talk about the, the holiday events that took place. Uh, Spruce Up did an amazing job. Um, it was one of two events that have taken over for the holidays. This is the first year Spruce Up did it. I'd never seen a real reindeer refill. I thought that was quite interesting. Uh, I think this is the first year of something that's gonna be quite big. And then this is Fowler, I, I, second year for the crab pot Christmas tree. I love that event. Uh, I think that it is a unique thing for Hammond. I'm glad to see so many people show up for it. Um, and uh, I just wanna applaud both those groups uh, for just doing, really just great group business events. They were wonderful events. I really enjoyed them.
Same answer. Nothing.
Um, next we have commissioner reports.
Nothing from me tonight.
Okay. I may, maybe your report was pretty much the same. So, city manager, I'll just uh, echo what um, Commissioner Mitchell said and that uh, the winter walk was a, a great um, first-time event. As you know, uh, Spruce Up had that cancel fall festival for like volunteers, but that one really kicked off and I think a lot of people's, some new people stepped up in volunteering for that. Um, and the crab pot lighting was, was uh, I was very enthused to see the turnout for that. Um, additionally, uh, we presented the uh, pillar of community um, proclamation to Jeannie Maddox at Peterson at the Nutcracker's last performance and that was very well received. Um, it was a packed house. They sold out the show. Um, parking was difficult to find. Um, which is a good thing. And um, and so that was, that was great. I also just wanna note that um, the Parks Alliance, and I've talked to city manager about this, but just for um, to report on the Warrenton Parks Alliance and my job as liaison to that is, uh, we're trying to work out how to get them better integrated into the projects that we have, the CIPs, and a clear pathway for, um, how they would go after grants and coordinate with the city, so it doesn't have to be. Currently, there's a lack of process, so it's kind of like, you doing it, we doing it, what's going on? So just getting that clarified. I'm looking forward to working with city manager on that. And uh, also I just wanna note, not necessarily related to our floodplain, uh, or sorry, our um, our risk 2.0 and buyout challenges, but separate from that FEMA is holding a public hearing uh, coming out December 10th, I believe it is. Um, they're not gonna take public comment. It's just a informational session. But um, they're outlining changes that they're making as they restructure the administration, um, has been restructuring that department. Uh, it'll be interesting to see what results from that, so.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah, and uh, League of Order Cities have a link on their Facebook page to that, so. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. City recorder? Alright, then we'll move right on to public comment. At this time, and wishing to address the city commission concerning items of interest may do so, the person addressing the commission must complete a public comment card and submit to the city recorder prior to the meeting. All remarks will be addressed to the whole city commission in limited three minutes per person. The commission reserves the right to delay any action if required until such time as they are fully informed on a matter. Uh, first off, we have Tony Flay.
Two things I'd like to cover tonight. Um, first is wanna stress, I mean, thanks for working with Don and the urban renewal by the committee. It's always nice to see the nice smiling face when you come into the commission meetings. Uh, you'll be greatly missed, but it's a well-earned retirement. The second thing I'd like to cover is I want to thank uh, police, fire, and all our public uh, safety officials, public workers out there. Been working pretty hard on the last few days out there and all the rain and stuff out there. I think they didn't know that the cities appreciate, the citizens are appreciative of what they're doing and do a part uh, our times there. I do wish that uh, maybe we need to look at keeping our ditches up a little better because I know it's getting pretty, pretty bad out there and if we keep them up, we'll have a little less backups to drink. Thank you.
And uh, I'll be uh, thank you, Mr. Flady. Uh, just so you know, I'll be uh, thinking some statements about ditches as well at the end of the order. And I think city manager has an update on where we're at with the ditch maintenance plan. Um, next, Mr. Rick Newton.
Okay, I'm here to educate you guys tonight. Um, Mr. Pope, pay attention. You will remember that when Baldwin shouted out horse crap twice when I had court. You were the among that ruled that I was the bad guy and I had enough of his crap. Mayor, he didn't finish the line crap. In here tells you, is interrupting is a basic sign of disrespect. It puts a glimpse on free express. The person interrupting is perceived as dominant and the person being interrupted is a victim. It shouldn't happen. You know, Robert, the border and this people come from the common teat status. You'll know what it is. Anyway, the mayor lied to you. There's only two things. Either he didn't know, which is not true, but it was asked, or he was lying. He absolutely, without a doubt, lied to you about who the bad guy was, cause I complained because I'd had enough of Baldwin's crap. So you need to learn your Robert's rules. I've only served since 1969, so I've read it a couple times. I just want you to know, minute and a half. I just want you to know, Henry. You have hurt so many people. You have damaged so many people. It costs stress for me, but it don't cost me three grand to get mine done, deal with. I caught you lying. I caught you playing games. I caught you being deceptive. So I want you to, you hold the title. In my opinion, from me, you are the most dishonest person I know. And I want you to think about that because you are. Even your grandpa said, but that's Henry. I'm not letting you off the hook. I don't like it when you lie. I don't like it when you connive. I don't like it when you hurt people. I don't like it when you harass employees so much that their health goes bad, as in the city manager and the harbor master, and you are responsible for that. And you can keep that smirk on your face if you want. You did it. That, I'm going to call because we think we provide end-of-life care for Patty's, whether he's not well. Anyway, you guys need to know what the rules are because the mayor will lie to you. He makes the rules up as he goes. As in Kenny's building get reapport, reappointed to the, I understand because he owns too many properties. I never saw that rule in the book. So anyways, you, you for, whoever the other guy is, you need to be careful because the mayor will lie to you. I wanna make that extremely clear. He will lie. Thank you. And of course, last of my ideas, I'll see you guys later.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Mike, I probably didn't do better. I can't.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. We'll move on to public hearings. We have the public hearing appeal of subdivision 25 dash one and the variance 25 dash one for nearing. Um, we will open up the hearing for that right now. And uh, staff has an update. We're going to go back out for notice and so this will actually, uh, this hearing will be postponed until January 13th.
Excuse me, the request is being made by staff. Unfortunately, notices, this is on me. The notices were not sent out in a timely 20-day notice matter. So we are requesting that this be uh, continued to January 13th at 6:00 PM. And this would be the only notice of that, um, beyond those notices that are sent in the mail.
Yeah, and, and we, we're in between city planners, so I understand that.
Unfortunately, I did not delegate in time to staff and that is my fault. So requesting that we just um, reschedule this to that time and, and the close the hearing for now.
Right, is there any objection to uh, tabling the public hearing um, until January 13th, 6:00 PM uh, at the city commission chambers at Seehole? No objection? Alright, so the public hearing will then uh, be continued into that date, uh, where we will pick it up uh, for the full hearing. Uh, so the hearing's tabled. We'll move on to uh, consideration of the nearing rezone ordinance number 1299, second reading and adoption.
Uh, so this has been brought before you at your last meeting um, and reviewed. This is the nearing rezone request that was before the plan commission and is now before you for second reading and adoption.
Alright, I know we uh, talked about this at the uh, last uh, meeting and essentially just taking stuff out of growth management zone to uh, density residential, so.
That is correct, going from RGM to an, to a residential.
Is there uh, a motion, move, motion to conduct the second reading by title only of ordinance number 1299?
So moved.
Uh, moved and seconded Poe Mitchell to the second reading by title only of ordinance number 1299. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Prior experte. Motion carries. Um, uh, three commissioners for, uh, one recused. Let the record reflect Moha has recused. Um, ordinance number 1299 and ordinance amending the city of Warrenton zoning map to reclassify the zoning of tax lots 81020AA00400 and 81020AA00738 from residential growth management to medium density residential. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 1299?
So moved.
They're second?
Second.
Moved and seconded Poe Mitchell to adopt ordinance number 1299. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those oppose. Motion carries unanimous. Um, let the record reflect, um, uh, the ordinance goes into effect 30 days after passage. So. Uh, next we have the ordinance number 1298, rules and regulations for water department. This is also a second reading. And we have Jessica Barrett, this.
I'm here bringing Warrenton's 1298 to the second reading. It is just a change to section five to the charter of payments and penalties and subsection E. Oh my, actually, and it is to clarify on the language that goes with that.
Alright, uh, we've already discussed this also in the last meeting, so um, is there any questions of staff? Is there a motion to conduct second reading by title only of ordinance number 1298?
Second.
Moved and seconded Mitchell Poe to uh, conduct the second reading by title only of ordinance number 1298. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance number 1298, providing for rules and regulations for the city of Warrenton Water Department in all areas served by the municipal water department outside the Warrenton city limits. Requiring installation of water meters, repealing any other water ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof in conflict herewith, providing a penalty for violation of any terms and conditions herein. Their motion to uh, uh, adopt ordinance number 1298.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded Poe Mitchell to adopt ordinance number 1298. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Next we have resolution for 2711, sanitation rates adjustment.
Um, I can take this one. I know uh, Dale is just coming in new acting as our acting public works director.
Welcome back and thanks for coming back.
And um, Kevin is of course on a well-earned leave, um, so he started this conversation, so Dale's kind of in the middle, so I will jump in here. Um, so this was, um, as we called it, the first step in review of our, our sanitation rates, um, to make sure we're covering the cost of replacement of some of our um, our trash trucks and some of the other day-to-day operations, um, that we're, we've been falling behind on because we haven't been doing our regular rate adjustments. Um, so this is a resolution presented to you to get, close that gap and maintain a stable, fully funded utility. We do anticipate, just as a note, a full rate study in the next fiscal year and given the comments of the commission at the last meeting, uh, we don't intend necessarily to bring this forward for July again. Uh, most likely this will be for adoption for January, do the full rate study and then make the plan to come back probably fall of 2026 with the full rate study review.
Alright, any questions of staff? Their motion to adopt resolution for 2711?
So moved.
Moved by Mohan, second by Mitchell, if that was good. Alright, um, to adopt resolution for 2711, all those in favor say aye? All opposed. Motion carries. And for the record, uh, those cost changes don't go into effect until January.
That is correct.
Request for qualification, qualified pool annual renewal. Dale?
Thank you very much and thank you for the.
Uh, in accordance with Warrenton Minutes of Code, 3.28 dot 120 AMV, the city required annually renew and establish a qualified pool of consultants anywhere from surveyor, structural engineers, civil engineers, and we have done that and got, like the list back. Um, and this is just um, to have this approved um, for the architectural engineering, photographing, um, mapping, transportation, planning, land surveying, related professional services, and of course with Warrenton Minutes of Code. Um, so this is just, uh, it's actually a extensive list. We have some new people on it this time around. It's just great. It's always uh, nice to get new companies uh, involved in some of this, so this is people for a bold initiative.
Alright, any questions of staff? Their uh, motion to approve the 2025, 2026 city warranty qualified pool list?
Second.
Moved and seconded Mitchell Poe to approve the 2025, 2026 city of Warrenton qualified pool list. All those in favor say aye? All opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Next we have rich, a request to purchase a side-loading refuse vehicle.
Thank you very much. We'll, this again, so city got one current uh, side-loading garbage truck. It's a 2013 model. It's well beyond its nine-year uh, lifespan. It's one of the vehicles that breaks down the mold in fact, it's over here stuck again. Uh, so this is uh, and we get to this in the capital, put in the plan in the budget uh, to replace it. And so we're looking for authorization of one refuse truck, EnviroClean environment equipment uh, under the Sourcewell contract.
Is there uh, any questions of staff?
One thing I might add, I believe Kevin said before he left is we may be able to get this um, ordered and delivered within two weeks is my understanding, which is great, cause we've been.
Delivered two weeks?
Because it's ready to go for us if you authorize this, so. Uh, which is great news because we're currently struggling with breakdowns. And, and one other item, we will keep the other side loader in reserve, fix it and have it handy in case of breakdowns of our other vehicles, so.
Alright. Uh, let the record reflect that my employer is Oshkosh PeroTech Oregon, which is an Oregon-based and we make electric tugs. However, our parent company does make a competing brand of uh, sanitation uh, trucks. And so I haven't had a chance to clear it with the ethics commission on whether or not to vote, so out of abundance of caution, I will recuse from this vote, even though I do support it, even though it's a competing model, so.
Good question.
Yeah, so I know we've talked about this and it doesn't mean that, after speaking with the city manager, if we ever decided to no longer uh, do trash on our own and we decided to do something with a recollection or somebody else, what's a depreciation, depreciation on, on a garbage truck? So let's say in four years, we, is there still uh, value? So we depreciate over so much over, over the, the lifespan of the vehicles. You said it's normal life is nine years.
Correct. There is a significant uh, value to the truck itself, even just after three years. We normally have the same driver, which is a great thing. Sometimes you have an alternate, but rather than have five different people operate the truck, one person's taking care of it like it's their own. So generally our trucks, as you can see, are lasting significantly longer just because of that. Um, also we send our trucks in uh, when they have major service to recollection. Um, anything that our mechanic can't take care of, other than oil changes and that type of thing.
So if in four years, let's say we did make a change, the, the uh, the truck would, would go as part of a bargaining package that would go with, as part of it. So citizens could recoup some of their funds and go back to the general fund.
To give you a ballpark, and this isn't precise, but the current side loader, even though it's about, you know, 12 years old, still has a value over a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, really?
And that's why we're not getting rid of it because we would actually have to put it to the voters. Um, and we still have use of it, so we are continuing to keep it. So that's the kind of value it's still retaining.
Appreciate.
Any other questions of staff? Is there a motion to authorize the purchase of a refuse truck from EnviroClean under Sourcewell contract 110223 dash THC in amount of $435,173.31?
So moved.
Moved and seconded Poe Moha to authorize purchase of a one refuse truck from EnviroClean equipment under Sourcewell contract 110223 dash THC in amount of $435,173.31. All those in favor say aye? All opposed. One recusal, that'll be me. Let the record reflect, may I balance recusing and the rest unanimous, the rest uh, uh, in favor?
In mayor, when you, uh, further down the meeting, you want to talk about ready ditches, I have the contract.
Oh.
That we're gonna send out.
Awesome, okay.
I'll let you do your thing and I'll reply.
I appreciate that, yeah. Um, alright, that's very exciting. Uh, next we have um, business item addition one, which is item nine F, appointments. So we had six applicants for parks. Um, I interviewed um, all but Mr. Hearn because he withdrew. Uh, we interviewed Shane Hall, Jason Lambert, Daisy DeVoe, and uh, Andres Cruz. Um, and Andres and Daisy had potential schedule conflicts with the um, standing meeting times. Um, and uh, and then uh, but Jason Lambert, Shane Hall, and Bert Little did not, so. That kinda left those three candidates um, as the, as the pool, so. On the marinas advisory committee, um, Mr. Levitt uh, will be going for position number one. He's a user of the marina, so that meets the criteria for that. Uh, that has been a hard board to sometimes get, or because based on the bylaws and requiring users. And then the community library board is a reappointment. Karen Grass is reapplying for position number five. There was, uh, Meredith Lehman had applied for the board as well. Um, but um, in standing practice, if a member's in good standing, typically we don't um, not reappoint them. Um, so uh, I didn't see a, a reason to change that up at that time, so. Is there um, any questions on the applicants or is there a motion um, to appoint the um, Jason Lambert's position number one, Bert Little's position number four, Shane Hall's position number five, and the parks advisory committee in setting their respective terms of office is provided in the nomination letter?
So moved.
So moved and seconded Poe Mitchell to appoint Jason Lambert's position number one, Bert Little's position number four, and Shane Hall's position number five, parks advisory committee in setting their respective terms of office is provided in the nomination letter. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Um, next we have marinas committee. Um, is there a motion to appoint Russ Levitt for position number one and setting his term of office provided to the marina advisory committee?
So moved.
Moved and seconded Poe Moha to appoint Russ Levitt, position number one, on the Warrenton Marine Advisory Committee and setting his term of office provided. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Next we have the community library board. Um, is there a motion to reappoint Karen Grass for position number five and setting her term of office is provided?
Second.
Moved and seconded Moha Poe to reappoint Karen Grass for position number five on the Warrenton. Moved and seconded Moha Poe to reappoint Karen Grass for position number five on the Warrant Community Library Board and setting her term of office provided. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls oppose. Motion carries. Um. Next, we have the housing grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize for bringing this to the agenda late. Um, unfortunately, this particular grant was only open for thirty days. Um, so we had a very limited amount to apply for this, and I was not aware that they would require a preauthorization from the commission to apply. Um, so we have to have the minutes stating there is authorization if we choose to to apply for this. So this is. The new housing grant that was in the bill from the governor's office that this is the first time we can apply for this. Um, we are trying to apply for two million dollars for the new wastewater treatment plant. In addition, we're bundling that with directly to the um housing project. And we're talking about the pump station on site. Um, so we are requesting approval to apply for this grant in the amount of two million dollars. And with the authorization for the mayor to sign.
Is there any questions of staff? Um, this is kind of um. Part of when we applied for the capital uh request to the legislature, there was a um. Big hoopla, I guess you could say, about they wanted to move everything into programmatic requests, of which this is a programmatic request. Um, instead of the Christmas tree bill, the legislature still went ahead with. Um, but uh. Any case, at least um we do, we do have a lobbyist engaged, and I feel hopeful that we will be able to get additional funds out of the legislature outside of the programmatic um aims. Um, in the short session as um, we do need to get this pump state or this um sewer treatment plant built, and that's going to be a significant hurdle. So. Is there any questions of staff? If not, is there a motion to authorize the city manager to apply for the Business Organs Housing Infrastructure Support Grant, authorizing the mayor to sign the city warrants and grant application and if awarded to accept and administer the grant?
So moved.
Okay.
Um, and uh. Um, I just want to be clear, too, also for the motion in the record, I am not administering.
There is an error. I was writing this very fast this afternoon for the city to accept and administer the grant, which would be myself, not the mayor.
Just because, yeah, I'm, you know, the technical does does make a does make a point. Um.
Yeah.
Can we uh?
Amend the motion.
Uh, yeah, can we amend the motion to to explicitly state that the city manager will be the one to accept and administer the grant if awarded?
I move to 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 uh.
Amen.
Authorize the second city manager to apply for Business Organ Housing Infrastructure Support Grant, authorizing the mayor to sign the city of working grant application. If awarded to accept and administer the grant by the city manager.
Second.
All right. Um, first I have to um deal with the first motion, though, because we wasn't, that wasn't a motion to amend. Um, so can we uh? Can we actually just vote down the first motion, the before us, which was the originals?
I withdraw my first motion.
What?
I withdraw my first motion.
You withdraw? Okay, thank you. Um, we will. Motion is withdrawn.
Okay.
And then uh, and your motion was to authorize the manager to apply for Business Organ Housing Infrastructure Support Grant and authorizing the mayor to sign for the city warrants and grant application, but the city manager uh to accept and administer if awarded.
And I second that.
So moved.
Okay, and then seconded by Poe. All right. Moved and seconded Mitchell Poe to authorize the manager to apply for Business Organ Housing Infrastructure Support Grant and authorizing the mayor to sign the city warrants and grant application and if. Where the city manager will accept and administer the grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls oppose. Motion carries. Thank you for indulging me in that uh furbish play of it. It is important, though.
This is what happens when I try to add things at the last minute.
Yeah, I'm glad I caught it. So, um, uh, next we have uh addition three, which is the clean water revolving fund loan from Business Organ.
And this is also one with a tight deadline. This one is actually due this Friday. Um, again, I did not realize they require a preauthorization approval. Um, this one is uh one where you apply for the loan. It can take up to six months, actually, sometimes to get it. Um, and the total amount we are currently applying for is three point nine. We do not have to take the full amount if we do not need it. Um, and there is a portion that is forgivable, which is is a nice, it's a low rate to this loan. So this is toward the new wastewater treatment plant. Um, we had waited on this because we were reviewing possible grants. We had anticipated having more grants in hand by this time. We do not yet. We still anticipate receiving some grants. Obviously, we're actively applying. Um, but in the meantime, we were encouraged to imply this cycle instead of waiting till May till April. Um, they have several times they opened this up just because it takes so long to to get in the process. Um, and again, we do not have to take the full loan unless needed. Um, but this would be toward the wastewater treatment plant.
All right. This motion, if you do read it, is correct. So um, is there a motion to authorize the city manager to apply for the clean water revolving fund loan? Authorizing the mayor's uh sign for the loan application if awarded, allow the city manager to accept and administer the loan?
So moved.
Moving seconded so Moha to authorize the manager to apply for the clean water revolving fund loan, authorizing the mayor uh to sign for the loan application and if awarded, allow the city manager to accept and administer the loan. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls oppose. Motion carries. And we'll go on. There's no discussion items. So go the order. Start with you, Mr. Mitchell.
Um, a few things. One, I make sure to get home because tonight Santa comes by, uh, with the fire department. It's one of my favorite things of the year is when, you know, and I sat out there in my pajamas and. And uh, give them all my goodies. Um, also, to Public Works, special thank you. It is a difficult job to just be out in the rain working, but to stay and to do really above and beyond is 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 a special calling to the city. And I hope that you explain to all of them how much it is appreciated. Um, to those of you celebrating Christmas, I hope you have a joyous holiday and uh for both from everybody in this committee. I'm sure we all agree. And uh, being the only Jew here, I also wish you a happy Hanukkah. So have a great holiday.
Next about.
Uh, we had a warranty having help kids and still school district Patty has stopped the bus at for toys at Fred Meyer. Very, very stuff bus. Went very good. You're still in the giving mood. There's the fucking toys at the Columbia Bank Ranch and and you still can drop off toys, but still for the evening.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Nothing about me today.
City manager.
I just wanted to echo um what Commissioner Mitchell said. We did have crew working very late, almost all the night last night, and then early in the morning. So I do appreciate all the hard work our staff have been doing. Trying to just keep up with our pump stations and everything else going on around the city.
Oh, thank you. City recorders? Or should I say, city recorders? Okay, um, I'll echo Commissioner Mitchell's comments. Um, it's uh, I know that some of our equipment can be sometimes old and finicky, which is why we always have those generators next to the pump stations. It's a full-time job, just keeping those going. Really appreciate the work that Public Works does to keep the city uh as dry as we can make it and being that we're eight feet below sea levels. The one question I did have, though, because I didn't, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up, um, was uh the ditch maintenance. Um, so Dale, do you want to? Come up and give us a an update on that?
Sure. So your public work, Kevin normally did put out our piece uh here, a request for codes, quotes on this. Um, he asked me to review it, uh, and so I did. And one thing, actually, a couple of things I'm working on is working with our G I S analysts. I need to. Show where the access to the to the ditch line is, uh, what restoration is going to happen, you know, if we go through different areas. Um, she makes it here that we know which government are, which culvert are, and also which culvert are the counties, and then we can address those. So this work would be done between July and October with the ditches for dry, you know, so they can see what we're doing. We know we have a couple of beaver dams. We dealt with those. Um, last, well, it's on Saturday, and we've all been running around uh on pump station, including myself, just to make sure and relay a message so we can get a pump moved and then. So we'll have this done by Friday, ready to go out in Lexico out the first of the year. We wanted to wait till after the holiday, but everybody kind of clear up their desk and then. Get it first year. So we will be going back out.
And this contract's actually fairly small because the evaluation is going to be done by staff to start. Um, there's a whole, um. There was an internal policy that had never been fully implemented as far as recording, tracking, and then this piece was missing of the outside contractors to do the actual repairs. And then assessment of culvert failure and getting those in the C I P. So there were some pieces missing that I think we have now in place. And so you will expect that staff will be starting the analysis of those um ditches as soon as the spring weather starts, if not sooner. And then when the summer weather hits, that those culverts and ditches will be repaired and maintained.
So just to clarify, because I think it's a small contract, is this ditch and culverts or just culverts?
This is just uh, they just clean and or mowing, whichever it takes uh to get it down and stop replacement culverts at this point. We will be inventorying the coverage, what type of material it is, what their condition is and what size. So if we do end up replacing one because it rusted down or partially would collapse, we'll look at upsizing or putting two side by side so we can increase flow.
Um, I do have uh just two questions to follow up on that. Um, one, um, and you weren't here for that question, so I'll just ask it to you, too, since you'll be in charge during this winter. Um. I ODOT had expressed to me an interest in doing sort of a memorandum of understanding where if there was urgent or seeing issues in their culverts. That if we wanted to go in there and access to clear it out because, you know, we saw that it was going to be a torrential rain pour and nothing had been done. Uh, an obstruction or something like that, that we would be able to do that. They said they have that with most of the cities except for us. I don't know if we ever got one signed, but I would like to see if we could explore that, just because I don't want to be hamstrung by jurisdictional borders if we need to do something on the fly.
We do not have that inflection. One of the things is if we go in and do a city of warranty on our workers, we don't have to go through all the permit process. Um, in different agencies, we can actually go in and do maintenance. If we hire a contractor and they're going to go into it, it takes permitting.
Sure. No, I'm just saying like if there's an some sort of emergency or some sort of thing where. There's an obstruction or something in a ditch and ODOT's busy dealing with a landslide or something like that off of, you know, thirty. I just want to make sure that we're not being. Hamstrung trying to get a hold of somebody after hours that may or may not be able to answer their phones, that we can make sure our ditches are clean because even though they're ODOT's ditches, they sometimes affect our. Our our quality of life here in the city. Um.
So, Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to follow up, um, we did reach out to Mark Buffington at ODOT.
Mm-hmm.
And he said he actually did not have an I G A for ditch maintenance, but would be happy to allow the city to clear it obstruction in the ODOT ditches if needed. And if the email is good enough for the city, then feel free to maintain obstructions in the roadside ditches, uh, ODOT right away.
Okay, that's what.
So he already has given us an informal approval of that.
Yeah, I'm not looking to maintain their ditches for.
No.
But I.
Make sure Dale has a.
Be clear about that.
Yeah.
I think I would probably just write in the letter and make sure it's a.
Formal.
Then just.
Yeah.
That we go with it.
Yeah. Yes. So we did reach out and receive some informal.
Okay, good. And then the other thing, too, is um. I know. So when you talk about ditch maintenance, I know, for example, it's been decades where the headwaters of Alder Creek, and I know Commissioner Dyer had mentioned this, also constituent Bill Kerr, both who live on the headwaters. Have stated that um uh those headwaters have silted in quite a bit, and right now some of those property owners are actually building. Like. Bowl works, I guess, for, you know, old kids, basically, to try to keep it from coming up their property. And so um. I'm hoping that we do take a look at that just because I know um when Colin Stelziger was Public Works Director, he'd mentioned. And confirmed that Alder Creek is the main drainage for the city of Warrington. Um, and so it's really critical that we get as much flood storage capacity out of that. Drainage, for lack of a better term, uh, as we can. And I know that's just been something that's been brought up quite a bit, and I hope. If there's something that we see that could be dealt with pretty quickly, that we don't wait for a consultant to tell us to do something that we might need to do. Right about it. So. All right.
And I believe there is a project planned around review of Alder Creek soon in this fiscal year. I I know Dale isn't. Looking at that yet, but I believe that should be coming fairly soon.
And I think our alter our interior drainage study actually shows that.
It actually showed some pieces of that as well. Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. All right. Um, no executive session for city commission meeting. Correct, city manager?
That is correct.
So we will adjourn the regular city commission meeting, and we will convene the urban renewal agency. I'll call this meeting to order. Has the roll call been taken? All right. Uh, before us, we have the urban renewal agency minutes from October twenty eighth and November twenty fifth. Um, on the consent counter, is there uh a motion to approve the consent counters presented?
So moved.
Sorry.
Moved and seconded Poe Mitchell to approve the consent counters presented. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls oppose. Motion carries. Um, no public hearings. The um business item for us is consideration of the urban renewal advisory committee bylaws amendment. Uh, we'd seen this in the previous meeting. Is there any further discussion or questions of staff related to the item? If not, is there a motion to approve the uh urban renewal advisory committee bylaws amendments?
So moved.
So moved and seconded Poe Moha to approve the advisory committee bylaws amendment, the ones from rural advisory committee. Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls oppose. Motion carries. There is no discussion items. There is no executive session, and this meeting is adjourned.